Madam Clerk? Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
And Supervisor Angus is not in attendance today. And we do have Supervisor Watson and Chairman Bishop here.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda this morning, this will be a discussion of possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon the updates. Good afternoon, Denise Burley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll start off with the numbers. We've had 3,708 cases to date in our county, 205 deaths, and 2,829 people recovered. I don't know if you've noticed recently that those recovered numbers have been updated more frequently. We've been able to do that through an automated process, so now you will see those updated daily. So hopefully that helps people kind of see the progression of the number of cases that we're working with and the number of people that have recovered fully from the virus. Our average age of case is 47.8, average age of deaths is 76.3. I'll review the hospital status update. And I don't know if you've had a chance and an opportunity to look at that this morning, but there does not appear to be any red flags or any major concerns as a result of the report. And based on conversations, at least with KRM-C, it sounds like their hospitalization rates and so forth have really gone down considerably. It's good news on the hospitals front.
Yeah, very good news. Thank you.
On an investigative update, out of those 3,708 cases, 3,034 have been completed, and 674 are active currently. And by active, that means we're either at one stage of that process. So whether or not we're still in the investigation stage, whether or not we've moved on to the contact tracing stage, or moving into contact monitoring. So we have been tracking those as well to try to give you an update there. Any questions on investigations?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
As we're not getting the updates on the investigations, can you tell us where the spread is coming from now?
It's still within households, generally speaking, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Director.
Certainly. Just on a staffing update with the temps, we still have 10 investigators, but I want to make it very clear, because you might look at the number of cases left and so forth, and the duties that have been assigned to these individuals. I'd like to go through those briefly so you can hear what each group is working on. But the staff in these positions are only recording the hours that they work. So while a person may have been hired on a full-time basis for 40 hours, if they're only working 30 hours because that's the workload for that particular week, that's all that's required. That's the only hours they're reporting. So they're adjusting their hours accordingly. So for the 10 investigators, for example, the last pay period worked, on average, 30.75 hours per week on investigations, contact tracing, and case contact monitoring. They're also continuing to provide weekend coverage. Three of the investigators continue to participate on the school task force, acting as points of contact for some Mojave County schools, districts for questions, concerns about the state-issued return-to-school guidance and benchmarks. And then we have the office specialists, which are working approximately 40 hours per week. They continually assist with the data entry of cases. They're also assisting with PPE delivery, assisting with the HHS testing that is going on this weekend, processing the rapid tests when we are using the Abbott Rapid Testing Machine, answering the CD line during the business hours, that's the communicable disease line or emergency line. And they're also trained as case investigators. If we needed to ramp up any kind of case investigation services that overwhelmed our 10 investigators, then they can step into that role as well, at least on a temporary basis. The three data entry clerks work between 9:00 and 32:00 hours per week. They coordinate the case investigator team and office specialists. Oh, sorry. See, I jumped ahead. They're assisting with data entry of cases also, and also assisting with coverage of clerical duties while staff tend to the COVID-19 tasks. So for those tasks that need to be continued for public health, and public health staff need to be engaged in that task, they're kind of backfilling that position so that we're not falling behind in other duties. And then the coordinator, of course, is coordinating the case investigator team and office specialists, and also assists with data analysis and data collection. So any questions about the staffing?
No questions.
Okay, all right. Okay, an update on testing. As you know, the HHS testing started today, so I wanted to give you an update on that. 143 people were tested in Bullhead City today. Or not tomorrow, but on Saturday. Hang on just one second, let me do my math. On the 12th, yes, on Saturday, there are 87 people registered for that particular event. We have 118 people registered for Kingman right now between September 11th and September 12th, and then we have 109 for the 13th and 14th in Lake Havasu City. Additionally, as an email was sent out yesterday, and an update was made to our webpage and to the Facebook page, the Embry Women's Health testing has changed their hours. And this was due to a number of factors, but currently they're operating seven days a week at each community, at the community college, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. instead of 10:00 p.m. So they'll continue that until otherwise noted. Any questions about testing?
So Denise, I have a question. At the MCC location in the three cities, are we getting low turnout? Is that why they reduced the hours?
The message that we received was somewhat low turnout, and also it was related to the heat and the hours of operation in that way, and the number of hours that their staff were out in the heat, and the shift, just trying to maintain one shift. So six to two is one shift for them, and I believe a two to 10 would have been the second shift, so.
Are they working outside at all three campuses?
I believe so, but I might need to ask Kyle, you know? Okay, thank you. It's all drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you may have seen an article on one of the vaccine trials being, moving to a pause status, and this was the AstraZeneca vaccine trial. And this was done to allow an independent committee to review the safety data of a single event of an unexplained illness that occurred in the United Kingdom Phase III of testing of their trials. It should be noted that this is a routine action, which has to happen whenever there is a potentially unexplained illness in any one of the trials while it is investigated, ensuring they maintain the integrity of their trials. So it's uncertain at this point when that pause will end. It will be after the independent review process, but I'm sure that when that begins again, we'll be seeing that information posted by the company and the media. Any questions on vaccines?
No questions.
All right. Okay, so as of this morning, we continue to be in the moderate category for our benchmarks from Mojave County, for business and for the schools, although we continue to see progress in that area and a downward trend in most of the metrics. The one exception to that was hospitalization or COVID-like illness data ticked up just a little bit, like 0.3% from last week, or two weeks ago to this last week that was reported. So I think, again, we're still seeing progress, and we need to continue on this trend if possible. Okay, so moving on. Last Thursday, we discussed enforcement and a process for enforcement of the executive orders. During that time, we talked about a two-step, two-visit process. First visit being initial visit, technical assistance and education, and the next visit being a verbal warning, and then moving on to the next more formal process. We've discussed this week with the County Attorney's Office and County Manager's Office, the process in greater detail, to try to line everything up in that process and make sure that we're doing our due diligence and understand the whole process all the way through. So we have developed a tool and a visual that we'd like to show you, and I believe the supervisors on the phone have received this electronically. But we want to talk through this with you and make sure that we can answer any questions. Thank you. So.
Can you all read it? We'll walk through it, but as long as you can get the visual image of it.
We have a paper copy of it, yeah.
Okay, good. Do you want to start?
Yes.
Director Burley and I worked collaboratively to try and put some form and substance to the process so that it affords due process to the business owners, but also a direct path to compliance if the business owner chooses compliance. So we laid out some steps, some timelines, and some next steps through this process. This is a draft, and we'd certainly welcome input. We've gone through it with County Manager Elters as well. But we are looking at, and after we go through it generally, we'll provide you with an example. And so that's the copy with the red lines that you have on it. We'll work through that example as well. But the point in doing this is really to provide fair notice to the business owner, a path to compliance, due process, while at the same time recognizing and addressing the need for expediency by the Board of Supervisors. And at the end of it, because my part really kicks in towards the bottom of this blow chart, it's important that if I do get to the point of needing to go to court to seek an injunction, that I have a paper trail that supports the hard work that the Department of Health has done. So with that in mind, I'll let Denise start at the top and walk you through it.
Certainly. So there are three pathways for us to receive a complaint. One would obviously be through our county webpage, the second would be a phone call, and the third would be through the ADHS complaint process that people can access through the ADHS website. So when we receive a complaint, we will log that complaint, and within one calendar day, we will complete an inspection. And what we are developing, and we're finalizing today, is a checklist that can be used by inspectors when they're out in the field looking for and looking at executive order violation, or compliance for that matter. So we will go out in that one calendar day to do an initial inspection. That initial inspection will include education, technical assistance, and will also serve as a verbal warning for that particular business. And at that time, we will leave them with a copy of the inspection checklist, which indicates the violation on the form or on the checklist. And in addition to that, on the second page or at the end of the document, there'll be a deadline for compliance, which will be 48 hours, and we'll leave a date and a time for that same compliance. So we'll have both of those listed. If there's no violations during that inspection, of course, we will be closing out the complaint, and they will receive a letter within one business day. If they are out of compliance, we will follow up within a 48-hour timeline that was indicated on the checklist, and we will move into that next inspection, a second inspection. During that time, again, we'll use the checklist as our measure for whether or not there's compliance, and we'll be asking the inspectors to provide detailed notes and pictures when available. And if they remain out of compliance, they will then receive a written warning with a 24-hour deadline for compliance.
And I want to jump in here just to point out that when we were here last Thursday, we envisioned another step in there. It was the first visit being technical assistance and education, the second follow-up visit then being a verbal warning if they remained out of compliance, and then the third visit was the written warning. We've condensed those steps and combined the technical assistance and education step with the verbal warning step to be able to expedite the process and protect the health of the people of Mojave County. So they're still getting all of the same steps, but we have combined the lowest levels into one step. Sorry, Denise.
No, not at all. Thank you. So they'll receive a written warning with a 24-hour notice for compliance at that point if they are continuing to be out of compliance. At that stage, moving into stage three, the County Attorney's Office would begin the Title 36 process, and there would be a 24-hour order to comply sent from the County Attorney's Office. And in all cases, we will be leaving a copy of an inspection report with the business so they can see what the next stage is and when that demand for compliance is required or the deadline for compliance. And we will have available, and at least in the first stage, we will provide the executive orders, the requirements for the business, and the compliance process that's laid out before you when it's final. So they have those three documents to look at to understand fully what will be expected. And then the final stage, if a business remains out of compliance, would be an injunction. Acronym?
Temporary restraining order. The statute allows for an injunction, a temporary restraining order. Because we're dealing with businesses here, we'd be looking at an injunction, and that would be filed by my office. And at that point, we lose a little bit of control over the calendar because then I'd be at the mercy of the court's calendar in terms of when I can get that heard. But it would be filed within the timelines that are indicated on here. It's also important to point out that these are graduated sanctions. It was our intent to start out with some direct reminders, some direct encouragement, some direct education for how to come into compliance. But you can see, as we move through this, we're stepping up the sanctions as we move through the process so that a person who's at stage three doesn't get the same sanction as a person who's at stage one. That wouldn't make any sense. So by stage three, we're looking at the Title 36 statute kicking in. We've got a very complete and thorough record if we do need to proceed to court. I think most importantly, we've given the business owner every opportunity to choose compliance at that point. We've educated them, we've provided them with notice, we would provide them with assistance if they don't have a clear understanding. But at some point, compliance is the expectation. And also at stage three, the $1,000 a day civil penalty kicks in because that is in the statute, and so it would be $1,000 for every day that they remain out of compliance, up to $10,000. What the statute is trying to do is incentivize compliance. At this point, there will be a penalty if they choose to remain out of compliance. And then, again, we get to the injunction stage. That would be filed within the next 24-hour cycle, and the $1,000 a day continues to accrue at that point. So it's to the business owner's benefit to be able to come into compliance as early as possible. The communities benefit as well for that business owner to come into compliance as soon as possible. So we're trying to educate, incentivize, and give them a clear path to compliance. We did work up an example. It is just an example, but it helps, I think, take these kind of baggy timeframes and put some substance to them. So if you want to look at the example with the red lines on it. And we just used an imaginary fictitious complaint that would be logged in at the start of the board meeting today at noon on Thursday. So by Friday, at close of business, the inspection would be due because it's a calendar-day timeline at that point. So if it comes in at noon, the inspection's going to take place on Friday. But the inspectors have up until the close of business on Friday to do that. In this example that we've worked up, it actually took place at noon. So if you can just for a moment imagine, complaint comes in at noon on Thursday, the inspection takes place at noon on Friday. The inspection does find violations, so they're at the point of the verbal warning being issued, they're providing the education, the technical assistance, a copy of the flow charts, and also a copy of the inspection checklist where it clearly delineates, you must come into compliance within 48 hours. That's your deadline for compliance. So that means that by a follow-up inspection would be conducted on Sunday at noon. We recognize that this does involve weekend time, and the Health Department is prepared to dedicate the resources to do that. So if the business by chance isn't open on Sunday, then it would flip to the next day when they would be open. But we will diligently work with staying with these timelines for businesses that are open seven days a week. And then at that visit, they would receive a written warning, again, because they've been found out of compliance, continued non-compliance. Their deadline now shortens to 24 hours, and that means that a follow-up inspection would be done by noon Monday. And at noon on Monday, if there is non-compliance noted at this point, then the 24-hour to comply kicks in, as well as the $1,000 a day starts at that point. And if they remain out of compliance for the next 24 hours, so essentially by noon on Tuesday, then an injunction would be filed in Superior Court after noon on Tuesday. They would have up until noon to come into compliance. At this point, as long as they remain non-compliant, the $1,000 a day continues, up to $10,000. If at any point the business decides to come into compliance, which we would sincerely hope that they do, we will be noting the corrections, we will be issuing a closure letter. If you go back up to stage one or two, we'd be issuing a closure letter in the next business day. At stage three, because it's taken so much to bring them into compliance, we're going to monitor that. So they come into compliance at stage three, they've been reluctant to do so up to this point, but they're finally in compliance. We're going to send a letter, and it'll explain the monitoring process. There'll be two random visits in the next two weeks to ensure continued compliance. And the same would be true at stage four. Now, we contemplated and puzzled through, okay, what happens if a business initially comes into compliance but then falls out of compliance again? And it's the last star on the bottom beneath the table. Any repeated violations shall be addressed through stage three. Because the business has already been educated, they've already been warned, they've already gotten the materials, they already know the expectation clearly, if they choose to fall out of compliance, we're starting at the point of the 24-hour order to comply and the $1,000 a day civil penalty. And then we'd go from three to four again. Any questions?
I have a question. On stage three, when they go into the $1,000 a day penalty, that lasts until the business is closed if they don't comply?
No.
Or until the injunction is ordered?
No, it would last up till compliance, but it's capped at $10,000. By statute, it's $1,000 a day up to $10,000. So if they remain out of compliance, because the injunction is to close the business until they come into compliance. And if that took, you know, five days, the stage three would be the first 24 hours, then we'd file the injunction, and let's say it took them five days. So there would essentially be $6,000 then in civil penalties at that point.
Okay, and that would depend on how soon the court was able to hear the...
No, it's tied to the business's desire to come into compliance. So if they came into compliance, let's say they were not sure that the county was serious about filing that injunction. So we file the injunction and say, that's it, you know, we get it, we're prepared to come into compliance at this point. There'd only be one day of a penalty on there, $1,000. So it's tied to the business's willingness to come into compliance. And again, it's one of the reasons that we've used graduated sanctions here. If they come into compliance early, they won't experience a civil penalty. It's the reluctant ones that will experience that higher level of sanction, and that sanction continues until one of two things happens. They come into compliance, or they reach the cap of $10,000.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, you may.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Can you tell me what the difference between this, these steps, and the normal steps we would take? It seems to me the normal steps that we take with a business that is not in compliance would be the same. Not for COVID, but for health and safety.
Oh, nuisance complaints, certainly.
You know, it depends on the complaint itself, Supervisor Johnson, and that would be the severity of the infraction. So it could be that we do have an opportunity for a 24-hour compliance that we use in extreme circumstances. But generally, and I'm sorry, I don't have an EH person here that could be more informative here, but generally, they would have a little bit more time to comply. But again, it depends on the actual infraction and the severity of that infraction, and whether or not it's food-related, or if it's trash and some of the other nuisance complaints that we address.
And if I might just add to that, because I do represent environmental health as well. If, I mean, nuisance complaints are still treated as safety hazards, which is one of the reasons that the county has the authority to step in. I can say that typically the timeline for a nuisance, like for instance, trash, or...
I can say that typically, the timeline for a nuisance, like for instance, trash, or some other kind of nuisance, we've dealt with...
Mice, rodents.
Mice, rodents, bedbugs, whatever it might be. There's considerably more time when you tag all the steps together. And so if it's a health concern, like an immediate foodborne illness outbreak, then the food code and the statutes provide for a very short timeline to correct that. So essentially, at this point, because we are dealing with executive orders that did not provide the specificity that, say, a food code or a statute gives, we've laid out the process then to bring them into compliance. And we'll be providing them with checklists that are a clear path to compliance as well. So if you look at from Thursday to Tuesday, it's entirely possible, under this scenario, that in six days, we're in court, which is a very short timeframe. And if we had to, for instance, on a foodborne illness outbreak, if there was a 24-hour notice issued, a closure order, we still have to go to court on that. And so we would not be, it would be a very similar timeframe on the most emergent situation in a foodborne illness outbreak.
But technically, we could use the same setup you've given us today, would be the same they use for something where we'd have, I mean, it's a nuisance and the same kind of nuisance, but it had to do with food, say, a food disease, or salmonella, or whatever it would happen to be.
The food, the food code and the process for that is not exactly like this, but it's very similar, where they would be given a 24-hour notice. What wouldn't come before that would be the verbal warning and the education, depending on the severity of it. If it's a run-of-the-mill kind of nuisance, that is considered a health risk as well, which is why the department has the authority to step in, then essentially, we see much longer timeframes than this.
Interesting. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Madam Chairman, Gould here.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Lenore, since we were here last week, the Attorney General has filed a suit against the governor for the governor's arbitrary treatment of businesses. Are we at risk for enforcing this on our business owners, should the court rule that his treatment of businesses has been arbitrary?
No, at least from my perspective, and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear everything in the beginning, but I think you said Lenore, you were dragging that at me. Okay. From my perspective, I don't believe so. There would be no retroactive penalty for enforcing an executive order that was in full force and effect at the time you enforced it. Now, if they overturn or determine that the governor exceeded his authority and we continued to enforce it, then that would be problematic. But I don't see it problematic acting on what is actually before us right now, which is an executive order that remains in effect.
So would the, if the business owner was fined the $1,000 a day, and the court overturned the governor's treatment of business, would they then be able to sue the county for the return of their fine?
I think that they could likely request the county return those fines, and the county would likely do it if they found out that they had corrected an error. The other thing is, I don't anticipate that the collection of that money would be immediate anyhow. You know, the fines are imposed, and as with any imposition of a fine, it takes some time to collect that. So we would be in a position where we probably had not collected it yet. It would be due in owing, but the money hadn't yet transferred to the general fund versus if it had, it could be a simple refund based on what we now know to be the state of the law in the state of Arizona.
The other issue is, a lot of times in statute, Sunday does not count as a day. So we may want to take a look and clarify whether Sunday counts as a day in this instance?
Yeah, and we did look at that issue from a couple different vantage points. And essentially, because it's a health issue, there was a determination made that we would use a calendar day and also 24 hours. So Title 36 does provide for the flexibility to use either calendar days or business days in certain circumstances. You know, if we're talking about going to court, it's not going to be a weekend or a holiday, it's going to be a court day. But for instance, the other Title 36 work that I do, some of that happens on a 24-hour clock, meaning each day, some of it happens via business day. Because it's a health issue, the county is going to have the flexibility to address it in a way that protects its citizens. And so that was why we went with calendar day. We did, we definitely paused on that and went back and forth on it. And again, this document is Mojave County's document, so if the Board of Supervisors determines that it should be something different than what's on here, please tell us.
Thank you.
Okay. I see no other questions. Do you have anything else? Do you need a motion on this process?
I don't think we need a motion. I think what we've got is we presented, we've already approved, we already proved the process that was outlined on Thursday, that was voted upon, that was approved. What they're doing here is they're laying it out and saying, okay, this is it, and they've fine-tuned it and made it so that it's consistent with what was already voted upon and approved, and you're going through it. There was just a slight modification, I think, at the beginning, but otherwise, it's the same thing, and they're just presenting that. So I don't think we need another motion. We'll move forward with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
I'm a little confused, maybe Supervisor Gould can update me, but I thought briefly that the Attorney General file was on bar closures, and the lower court has already ruled in Ducey's favor on that, I believe.
Supervisor Gould?
Supervisor Johnson, this was something that I just saw in the news two days, I believe it was the Friday of last week.
Oh, okay.
Which was the day after I tried to use arbitrary and capricious as many times as possible.
All right.
Thank you.
I have questions, other questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. It has been released that President Trump said that coronavirus is five times more deadly than the flu. Is that something that you agree with, Director Burley?
I think the statistics show that there is a statistical significant rate of illness that's over flu. And so, yes, I do, I don't know if it's the exact number of five times, but I do believe, statistically speaking and percentage-wise, it is significantly more infectious, and we've had more deaths from this than flu as well.
Okay, I noticed today our RNOT number is above one. Can you explain to the board how the RNOT number is calculated and the importance of it?
Sure. The RNOT number is related to the infection rate. So an RNOT number of less than zero means that you have, your infection rate will continue to go down, and an RNOT above one means your infection rate is creeping back up, or going back up. So it's important that we keep that RNOT number below zero, or below one, and get that number down as low as possible, because we'll continue to see a decrease in case rates at that rate. Did that address your question, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
But now we're above the one right now?
I believe so. I haven't seen that number, Supervisor Johnson, so I haven't been at my desk much this morning. So I will go back and look at that.
All right. And the state has continued to be 12 confirmed cases ahead of us for quite a while now. Is there any reason why we haven't caught up or haven't adjusted?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Johnson, could you repeat that question? Which city was it?
The state has continued to be 12 confirmed cases ahead of us.
Got it.
For quite a while now. Are we going to catch up, or is it a, is there a reason why we haven't caught up with them yet?
I noticed that as well this morning, when I looked at the ADHS website, and I looked at our case fact sheet. So I will follow up on that as well and try to get another response. Thank you for bringing that up.
That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No questions?
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much, Denise. We'll move on to the next agenda item, number two. This will be a discussion of possible action to approve the continued utilization of the Mojave Educational Services Cooperative Contract Number 151-CDWG-1002, with CDW-G for year two of the three-year enterprise enrollment agreement, providing Microsoft client access licenses for county systems, including Microsoft Active Directory Exchange email system, Skype for Business, System Center, endpoint protection, Windows Data Center Edition, SQL Server, and remote desktop services in the amount of $66,093.36 from budgeted Fund 60111100-43815 and FY21. This was brought to us by Tara Acton, the procurement director. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion on second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number three. This will be a discussion of possible action to direct the county attorney's office to put together a legal opinion on public Facebook interactions, and then direct staff to come back with an official Facebook policy for staff who are being involved, who are to be involved, and daily postings to the page. This is brought to us by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I brought this forward today because our county manager mentioned briefly at Tuesday's meeting that we will be creating an official Mojave County Facebook page, and I was a little taken back by this because I believe this is a discussion we as board should be having, as any new page and content put on that page will have a direct effect on us. It's the elected officials who are the ones who have to deal with any negative fallout should it occur, and therefore, I would have liked to have been part of the discussion before it was officially approved. I'm not really sure what we are trying to accomplish. We already have a Mojave County Health Department Facebook page, a Mojave County Division of Emergency Management, a sheriff's office, animal shelter, economic development, parks department, Superior Unlimited Court page, the medical examiner has a page, the assessor has a page, a race has a page, the library has a page. So my question is, are we getting rid of all these other pages and replacing them with one central Mojave County page?
Manager Elters, do you want to try to answer that question?
Sure.
Or you can bring up our PIO, I think.
I think I'll take a shot at it.
Okay.
And then ask both our PIO and our IT director to assist.
Okay, thank you.
And so, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. The, as you pointed out, different departments within the county, elected and non-elected officials have had a Facebook page. Having now a public information officer onboard to assist the county in interacting with the public, to get pertinent information out and respond to inquiries and questions, it is at least my belief that we need a county-wide Facebook page that will pull in all the other pages, will be consistent in our policy as far as interacting with the public and answering questions, and looking similar, understanding full well that the court system has some autonomy and may look and feel a little bit different than the rest of the Facebook page that the county will adopt under the Board of Supervisor guidance. It is seen as an effective tool. We have reached out to other county supervisors that have been at it for quite a few years to learn from their experience and build on their knowledge. The feedback that we've gotten has been good and positive. They believe it's a terrific tool. There are filters that are built into the system that one can use. And at this point, since our public information officer, Roger Galloway, has been the person reaching out to those other counties and to other PIOs, I wonder if you would indulge us for a couple of minutes to have Roger come up and share with you what he has learned from other similar counties' experiences? And then, if there is a need for any technical questions related to the filter, or how we pull these various Facebook pages together, then Nathan is here and will address that for us as well. So Supervisor Johnson, with your indulgence, I'm going to ask Roger to step up to the podium.
Okay, so our communications director, Mr. Roger Galloway.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Chairman Bishop, supervisors. I spent quite a bit of time last week, and again this morning, with other PIOs, communication directors, county directors in the state of Arizona. I found out, first of all, that out of our 15 counties, the following, Cochise, Coconino, Pima, Maricopa, Yuma, Yadapai, Navajo, Apache, Hila, and Graham, all have their own Facebook county page. The ones that do not are Santa Cruz, Pinale, Greenlee, La Paz, and us. So we're kind of in the minority there. I found out also that out of the 10 counties that do have their own county Facebook page, every single one of them are interactive. In other words, they do involve comments by the public, which I strongly agree with. I think that's a very integral part of having our own county Facebook page. I spoke to, I sent feelers out to either call them or email them to four of those 10 county communication directors. I spoke in depth to three of them, Coconino, Navajo, and Yuma. I especially spent a great deal of time with the communications director for Yuma County. And the interesting thing about him, that's Kevin Tenel, is he's been involved in this for a long, long time. He has, also, by the way, he works with FEMA, he travels all over the country, he puts their PIO policies together, a very smart, bright guy. He's been working as communications director in Yuma County since 1999, and he's been on Facebook for 10 years with their county page. And he said, some of the, the drawbacks are obvious about the interaction. You're going to have people that are not going to like what we say, or they're going to disagree with it. But that's kind of part and parcel of what we should be doing with our community for transparency, to hear from them what they have to say, good or bad. Some of it will be very valid, some of it will not be, some will be crazy, off the edge, so to speak. But there are controls put in place for that from the standpoint of language, or threats, or saying something that's libelous, those kinds of things. They still have a right to be able to say what they want to say on the Facebook page. I think one of the most important things that Kevin pointed out to me is, and it's kind of obvious, is, "Don't forget," he said, "it is social media. It's meant for interaction." And that's what exactly you should have if you have that page. It's meant for interaction, and that's what exactly you should have if you have that page. Otherwise, you're going to find that very few people are going to want to go there. It's their chance to vent, good or bad. It's their chance to say something, or react, or to react to the comments that other people make as well, and make their own comments. So it's very good in the long run for that." The other two PIOs that I spoke to said essentially the same thing. They said it's been a little more difficult, as we all know, because of the COVID issue. Because we're deeply divided across the state, across the country, on that particular issue, and what should be done and shouldn't be done, et cetera. But other than that one issue, over these years, especially with Yuma County talking to me, things have gone very well with that. And I believe that we definitely should have a presence with our own Facebook page. We get the proper filtering system in there as well to help us out on that level. I think it'll be beneficial to everyone and to the citizens of our county as well. So that's pretty much. Any questions?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I'm not sure maybe Mr. Galloway knows. So who's going to be answering all these questions? I mean, we as elected officials, most of us have our own Facebook pages. We go to meetings when COVID's not around. We have offices where people call us. Are we now going to be expected to go and monitor the Mojave County Facebook page and answer questions when they critique something that an elected official was done? Who's going to answer all these questions?
It would be primarily me, but not always. For example, you know, again, what I experienced with the other PIOs and what they told me, much of what they put up is not controversial, anyway. And it doesn't require that kind of response, especially when you put up something that you, let's say we put up something on COVID. I think we're going to know that, we're going to get some responses there. So I would alert, for example, if it's something I can't answer myself, or we don't need to answer, we let it go by. If we do need to answer it, and I can't answer it myself, I would turn to Denise, or possibly to Byron, maybe to Ryan, depending on what the situation is. But believe me, again and again, they told me that this irons itself out. It is not the problem that you think it would be. Elected officials are the ones that will probably look at this in a different way than the rest, and that's because of obvious reasons. And I don't think we're going to be putting up too many things that are going to involve a specific supervisor. That's for their page. Mostly, it's going to be, "The board supported this decision. It was passed, and we put up whatever it might be." Could be the budget. We'll get all kinds of responses on the budget. And depending on who asked the question and to who they're referring to, that response would come from that individual or not. But I'm prepared to devote the time to it because I think it's very important. I'm very familiar with Facebook. I've been on the pages since 2008 extensively, first as news director of radio stations, and then for my, when I had a talk show as well. And I interact a great deal, and I have been for a number of years.
Madam Chair, I just think that's going to be a problem with this. I mean, interactive, if you expect the PIO to contact the assessor with questions and those sorts of things, but that's just one thing I have. Now, who's going to be allowed to put the content on these pages? In the past, the policy that we had, which should have been more defined, they let department heads set up these Facebook pages. I always believed it should have been with the approval of the manager, but the previous manager didn't want to do that. Who's going to be putting the content up on these pages now?
Is that directed to me, or?
Whoever can answer.
Well, I would be putting up, a lot of them, a lot of them will be press releases, all right? And I would be putting those up through, some of them will happen automatically. In other words, if I put up a press release on our webpage, it will automatically, automatically go to Facebook. Just as it automatically does right now, go to Twitter. A little more of this, perhaps Nathan can explain in just a moment. But that's kind of the way it would happen. It would just go there automatically, once we put those up. Most of what we put up there, I would imagine, would be press releases. But also, a fire breaks out, we would put that in there. If a road closure takes place, that would go in there. It would become the one place people go to, to find out what's going on with the county. It would be the county official page.
What happens to our library district and those people if somebody just wants to find out where the library? Do you have tabs, the same as our page that we have now on the internet, that you can go to Mojave County Facebook page and there's a tab that says "library," or "race," or?
To be honest with you, on that particular, I'm not certain exactly how that would work. Nathan knows. Facebook's a little bit different from that standpoint. But the idea is, the idea is that the library, if I'm correct on this as well, Sam, is the library would put the information that they have normally been putting on their page would go on our page, our county page. So it would go directly there. Everything would go to the county page.
Okay. But I guess you wouldn't be able to search it then? I mean, if I went there and said, "Okay, I need to look up the library, what they've been doing." I might have a press release on the fire. I might have something from the sheriff. I might have something from all these other people, and not necessarily be able to find the one I'm looking for.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson, obviously you're very familiar with Facebook, and you know a lot about it. Your questions are well thought out, and I would like to ask Nathan to come up to the podium and help us perhaps answer some of these more of a technical questions than Roger can. So, thank you, Nathan.
Okay. Nathan McDaniel.
Good afternoon. So a question regarding the other departments' Facebook presence is, you know, based on what I understand on the function of Facebook, you know, I don't believe you're going to have visibility of every single department's Facebook presence within the main Facebook site. All of the other Facebook sites, as they exist today, are sole and separate. You know, the county never operated an official Mojave County Facebook presence before. So all the other Facebook sites that exist and are operated by the other departments throughout the county right now are sole and separate. They're not linked together. They're not, they're not under any type of county hierarchy. I believe the vision, long-term, would be to create that hierarchy. However, that needs to occur. That's, you know, that's a bit of an unknown for us right now, since we've never operated Facebook officially as a county. So I have a lot of research I need to do as far as what it would take to potentially bring those sites as subsites of the main county Facebook presence, if that's even possible. But I think Supervisor Johnson's question, you know, regarding, would the library then put their posts on the official Mojave County Facebook site? I think the answer to that is no. I think the primary goal would be to continue allowing the departments and elected officials to interact with their people that are following their Facebook sites as they are today. I don't think the goal is to change that. I think the goal is to add an official Mojave County Facebook presence so that Roger can, you know, issue press releases out through it and other specific information that is countywide news in general. I don't think the goal is to change the way everybody's doing business and say, "Now you have to post your stuff through the main county Facebook site." I think, I think if we were to do that, you would lose a lot of people that are following the existing sites for the departments, because they have kind of, over the past decade, have developed a following of people that know where their site is, go to their Facebook presence for like the library branch and Havasu, or the assessor, or the sheriff. And I don't think we would want to disrupt that ecosystem.
Well, let me ask you this then, Mr. McDaniel. What's the difference between what you want to do now than what you have on the official Mojave County page on the internet, when I search for Mojave County? And I also have a little button there where I can say, "Ask a question." What's the difference between the two? Nothing?
You know, I think fundamentally, the difference is the county website is not a social media platform. It's, you know, it's developed by our software developer in the IT department. And it's not, it's not, there's not an app you can install on your phone for the county website. You know, Facebook has phone apps, tablet apps. And it's, you know, it's a specific platform designed for people to communicate directly with each other. Right now, the county website doesn't serve that function. It doesn't allow people to basically add a comment to any and everything they decide. You know, on Facebook, anytime a post goes out, anybody can comment on it, and discussions and dialogues can take place based on that event. The county website currently doesn't do that. While the county website does have a "make a service request" function, that is more along the lines of how a citizen would officially request service from the county. I think the primary difference with operating a Facebook site is, when people comment on posts, let's say Roger releases a press release, or let's say they put out some information on the Facebook site about the ridge fire, you know, had we had that in place for the ridge fire, that information could go out. Citizens could comment on the post, ask questions, and Roger could collect the information, provide the answer quickly for those people that are inquiring. The county website doesn't offer that functionality. It's more along the lines of, "Hey, I need service. I need a permit. I want to do a nuisance complaint. I want to report a sign down." And that triggers a workflow that is directly sent to a department to do work. Facebook, on the other hand, comments aren't going to trigger county employees to go do work.
I guess what's confusing to me is that, like you used the ridge fire as an example, now we're going to have our PIO, if we still have, Emergency Management has their Facebook page. They're going to be duplicating stuff. I would think maybe we need to do a little more research into this and come up with a plan that might be a little better, because I think it's going to be pretty confusing with what we've talked about now. And maybe that plan could include, you know, and I'm not aware of all the platforms that are out there, because I'm older, but if we're going to start reaching people, I know Facebook probably only reaches about 50% of our people. You know, they have the Twitter, and I know that some of our departments use Twitter, you know, especially the Sheriff's Department and Rhodes and those guys. But, you know, even TikTok, it has to sell or whatever. I don't even know what that does. But maybe we ought to look at getting more into social media. I believe we need to get our presence into social media, but I'm thinking until we get every, all the kinks worked out, we probably should, you know, hold off on doing too much. That's basically all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Johnson. I have a couple of questions. If on our county Facebook page, somebody wants to make a complaint, would the communications director then tell them, give them a link to make a service request? Is that basically how we would handle complaints that come in on Facebook?
Chairman Bishop, in my perception, that would be the most ideal scenario. Is, you know, today the county has existing channels for how citizens request service. And I think, you know, Roger can aid in communicating those channels to the citizens, because I think in some ways, a lot of people don't know the best way to get service from the county. Some people may not even know that you can go to the county website, click on the "I want to" menu, and choose the option "make a service request." I think a lot of people may not even know about that. I think that's, you know, I think that's the intention that Roger Galloway has for the Facebook presence, is to help market methods for communicating with the county and getting service from the county. That way, we can kind of enhance the services we're providing to the citizens. I think that's really the goal Roger's seeking, and I think that would be really nice to help spread that type of information out to our citizens, because it does help them get service quicker. I don't necessarily believe that someone commenting on a Facebook post is going to trigger a nuisance complaint where environmental health is going to go do work. That's just an example. I think a normal nuisance complaint would still need to be reported to environmental health in the normal way that it gets reported today. I don't think that county business operations are going to change. I think this just enhances our ability to communicate with citizens. And it gives them a public forum to basically tell us whether or not they're happy with our service.
Okay, and along the same lines, if somebody wanted to get information about the library services, then communications director could then just put a link to the library page?
Exactly. You know, and another thing with Facebook, you know, the Supervisor Johnson's question about, is the library going to post on the main county Facebook site? I don't, like I said before, I don't believe that is what's going to occur. But I believe what we can do with Facebook, is I think you can configure reposting. I'll have to go double-check that. I know at one point in time, you used to be able to repost, like Twitter stuff to a Facebook site. So if the county operates Twitter and Facebook, we could basically, stuff that goes out Twitter, we could have it automatically come out the Facebook site without a human being doing that. I don't think that functionality is there anymore, but I believe it is there for other Facebook sites, where I can follow, like, the main Facebook site could basically be connected to the library site in some way. And that way, when the library posts something on their page, it gets reposted on the main county page. So it becomes a dynamic kind of thing that requires less human manual work.
Okay, and then I also, maybe Ryan will want to chime in on this, but if the five supervisors make comments on this county Facebook page, are we then possibly breaking an open meeting law?
That's a good question, if I may answer. And if I can just back up a little bit to kind of talk about some of the legal issues that we've kind of touched on today. Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, so that we're aware. First off, social media, the courts have determined that social media, the commenting, the liking, the retweeting, those, that interaction that the director is talking about, that is all First Amendment speech. And so when there's First Amendment speech and you have government involved, then you've got to look into, you've got to make sure that the government is not restricting the First Amendment, not restricting that speech. The First Amendment prohibits the government from restricting that speech. So one, this is speech, and two, you've got to decide what kind of forum this is. And the way you describe it, it is a public forum, and the courts have determined it is a public forum. So what that means is that when people comment, when they submit information on there, when they're talking back and forth, we cannot discriminate against that. We have to be viewpoint neutral, and that means that we don't delete it. We can't delete it. We should not delete it. We shouldn't delete the comments. We shouldn't delete the likes and the replies and the retweets. Those things are, it's protected by free speech, and so we would not be able to do that. Now, could we come in and control some of it? The only part that we would likely be able to control is what Roger was talking about in terms of the filter. So we could filter out abusive language, curse words, things that are sexually explicit information. Those things, we could absolutely cut those off. But outside of that, outside of offensive language and things, we would not be able to delete it. I mean, courts have universally said, "You don't delete these comments, and you don't remove people because you don't like what they're saying." I mean, criticism is part of being, being part of government. People are going to be critical of the things that we do, and that's their right to do that. So just keep in mind that we have those things. As far as the open meeting law is concerned, that's a really good question. I did a, I researched the other angle of it, but I haven't really looked at the open meeting law part of it. There'd have to be a quorum, and then there'd have to be some kind of discussion and debate and so on. I think there could be a risk. I'd have to look into that further. I don't, I don't know, though. I'd have to look into it. I hate to speculate right now, just to say. But I know that, for example, an email, absolutely, when we're, when, if supervisors were emailing back and forth and there was a quorum, then that would be potentially open meeting law violation. But in terms of if more than one supervisor commented on it, I'd have to double-check that and get back to you.
Okay, that's all of my questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Supervisor Johnson, this is really a great dialogue that we're having. And if we need a little bit of time to follow through on some of these points or questions, we'll be happy to do so. The fact that there are 10 other counties in Arizona already doing it, one would think they've contemplated some of these questions and concerns and have addressed them. This is really intended first and foremost as an added tool for communication. It has value in reaching out to the public as well as hearing what they have to say. It, as noted already by Supervisor Johnson and by staff, we have many Facebook pages today for many of our departments. I bet you they're not consistent, and I'm not being critical. I'm just making a point of fact. So Roger's role, our public information officer role, isn't so So Roger's role, our public information officer role, isn't so much to control or dictate, would be really more to coordinate between these various Facebook pages and guide or direct questions to the proper department head or department. And, and I would, I would go back to, this is a valuable tool in case of emergencies, and Nathan mentioned fire. We have other emergencies beside fire. We have traffic accidents that shut down some county roads that are rural in nature and do not have detours, and it would be great to notify the public that a road or a highway is shut down. It would be valuable in the case of rainstorms and flooding, where we have at-grade crossings, where we do not want the public to cross these locations, and, and, you know, our Public Works Department, inclusive of the road department, and, and the signing and striping, need time to get out there and close down these roads to ensure the safety of the public. So there's really an added value to it. So I, I would, I would strongly recommend that we stay the course and, and plan on having a countywide Facebook page, but to ensure that you, the supervisors, are comfortable with it. If there are specific points or concerns that we need to pause until we address and answer, by all means, we certainly can. And Supervisor Johnson's item is to, you know, ask the attorney's office to weigh in, and perhaps, you know, establish some guidelines, and I certainly welcome them. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to add my thoughts to it.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. I guess that's where the confusion's coming from me, and I'm, if I'm confused, I'm guessing the public would be confused, because right now, I mean, I put out, and others do too, other supervisors put out road closures and that sort of thing, which we get from Public Works. But a lot of people can go to Public Works, and they get those updates on a phone, they can sign up and get it sent to their phone. Now, we're going to have another platform where the information is coming from, but we're not incorporating the library and those other people in it. So to me, it's like, all you're going to be having is press releases on it. I guess that's the problem I'm seeing. I don't see where it's going to be an official page if we have all these other unofficial Mojave County pages that are run by departments. So that's the confusion I have. I just think we'd, we'd be better off having a policy in what content's going to be, and what our goal is before we move ahead. I think that's the last, Madam Chair.
Okay. Good comments, Supervisor Johnson. And you know what? I'm just speculating that as this page goes forward and becomes more interactive, that some of these other departments will probably consider deleting their page, or deactivating their page, and coming onto the main county page, if it, if it's effectively working well. Nathan, is that something that you envision?
You know, I would say historically, the main reason why the county didn't operate an official Mojave County Facebook presence is because historically, we didn't have a communications director or PIO. You know, I think the primary reason why we have a lot of different Facebook presence out there by the departments is because they have someone in their department that is engaging with their constituents, or the people that are interested in their line of business. And, you know, now that Roger is in place, I think the goal for him is to use it as a tool to enhance his ability to communicate with citizens. I don't think that it's, I don't think the intention is to replace what's going on out there with the rest of the departments and elected officials. I think the intention is to augment and enhance what we're doing. I think as time goes by, and we learn more about Facebook functionality, because it does change rapidly and significantly, and it does help optimize communications. I think the primary objective for Roger is to coordinate with those departments that already have social media presence, so that we can augment what they're doing and help get the word out to the citizens in a more centralized fashion, similar to how we're getting the information out on our official Twitter site. Right now, the county has an official Twitter site, and press releases, road closures, YouTube videos, and calendar events from the website dynamically feed to that site. The plan is to also include that functionality with the existing, with the new Facebook presence for the county. But on top of that, Roger will be an administrator of the site, so he'll be able to put content out on his own as well, such as any type of custom information that needs to go out based on whatever line of business triggers that need. And it creates the public forum for the citizens to comment on those things. Currently, that public forum doesn't exist on the Twitter site for the county. It's an output information only. There is some bidirectional communication that occurs with the existing Facebook presences from certain departments, and they have an employee or whoever is working in their office that's operating that presence, doing that interaction and answering questions. I believe Public Health has a Facebook presence, and they've been putting a lot of COVID information out, and they have someone manning that site and interacting with the citizens. So, you know, I don't think the intention is to control and, and have departments shut down their presence. I really think, like I said before, it's to enhance and augment what we're doing, and do it, and do it better. And, you know, with Roger in place, you know, he can coordinate, you know, use of social media countywide as an effective tool, and get everybody doing it kind of the same way, instead of everybody doing it their own way. We can kind of rein it all in a little bit and streamline the operation.
Yeah, I agree with, with your statements. And also, when we decided to bring on a communications director, that was one of the things that, that we said that we wanted with a communications director, was, was a social media presence. So I think that was, that was pretty much decided back when we decided to hire a PIO or a communications director. So my last question is, is would we have control over who is able to post on the official county webpage? I mean, our constituents, could they post things on there, or could they only comment on what we post?
I believe the intention is for them to be able to comment. The, the determination on who's going to be able to push content through the site is really going to be up to Roger. You know, he's kind of the, the official county Facebook presence. He will be, he will be the man when it comes to coordinating use of that as a tool.
Okay. And I don't believe that would be a violation of First Amendment if we controlled the content.
No. I mean, what you've got is, you've got two different things here. You've got government speech, and then you have First Amendment free speech. Government speech is what we control, and government speech is not subject to the First Amendment. So government speech is things like our website. We put the content on there. We control that content. We can, we control the message that we're giving out there. Government speech would be the press releases that Roger puts out. He controls the content, he can, or the government controls what that message will be. That's something that we can control. If we lay out at the very front and say, hey, this is what our, our Facebook page is, we decide what the content will be, that would be within our reins. What we could not do then is control the commenting, things like that. That would be something that would, that people could comment as they please, and they would do that. That's something different that, that would be separate from it, and so that would be allowed. I'm not, I'm not much of a Facebook person. I have Facebook mostly because a lot of people say a lot of dumb things on Facebook, and so it's a good way to find out what people are saying. And so as an attorney, that's what I usually go to Facebook for, is to see what people have said. But otherwise, I'm not very savvy in terms of what goes on there and what's not, so we'd have to look at it, you know, to really get down to the nitty-gritty, but otherwise, I think it'd be fine.
And I just want to, I would like to make it clear, you know, the citizens wouldn't have the ability to generate the content.
Yes.
That, that is not what we're talking about. The citizens don't have the ability to generate content on any of our other social media platforms. Those platforms are owned and operated by the county, or I should say, operated by the county, owned by Facebook, Twitter, whoever the platform is. But the citizens will be able to comment on this. And that is, I think, the major change that's occurring, is right now, there's not an official Mojave County presence that allows the citizens to comment. There are departmental and elected official presence where that functionality exists, but there's not a countywide one, and that's what Roger wants to set up.
Okay. Thank you very much. And if we could hear any closing comments from Roger Galloway, please?
I'd just like to add one other thing, if this would be of interest to you. We explored this a little bit further and more specifically. Kevin, who is the communications director for Yuma County, said he would definitely be willing to come over here and address the supervisors, the staff, about how it's worked in Yuma County all these years, and everything they've done over there. And I think some of these questions that have been, that everybody's been asking, can be answered pretty well. He's really knowledgeable, and he's been at this for a long time. So, just a thought.
That's an interesting thought, and we may actually speak about sending Kevin an invitation and, and.
All right.
Learning from what he spent years learning himself.
He certainly has.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Supervisor Gold.
The biggest problem that I see with the county having a Facebook page is, and as Congressman Gosar found out, that people can make derogatory statements about the supervisors or about the county, and you can't take those down. So they're out there in perpetuity. And people seem to be on their worst behavior on Facebook, so you're going to see a lot of this garbage out there, and there's nothing that you can do about it. And I personally don't see the benefit with that being the case. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
All right.
Seeing done, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.